I get a session.
Look at motion.
I get to move in second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Boys abstaining. We're out of executive. All right, it's seven o'clock, I'll call the public session to order, please stand for the saying of the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'm gonna turn it over to Allison. For the presentation of the external audits report.
Okay.
I've seen it, so I could pass mine out.
No, I think everybody's got them.
Oh, Stevie got one?
No, I don't.
Steve doesn't have one.
Oh, Steve doesn't have one.
I can share Jason, I'm good.
They got it, okay.
Going through the presentation, the first item is three products that are on it, personal forms we are paying to our next for on audit. We may get by yet again, we provide a minimum on those data findings taken recurrently in the form of a new board with an unqualified committee. That is a clean opinion, it's the best we can do from the audit constructive. As I said, they are directed for on video, if you want to see more heads. By October fifteenth, which is today, seventeen, three, four days deadline, not in due time, that would be able to see file. Physician community, which will be an additional letter that is a letter that should be handy in housekeeping items or sacrifices. We will have post any of this, this is the planning of the letter, making sure the future reporting fires require meetings. With the governmental standards for comes out of certain accounting, I consider requires of forbidden land, which show the user or the requirements. More of a for your information and sort of report of what I have there. There is one significant efficiency in the line of security audit, it's on both, it's more related in a future slide. They also issued the lead one, Ohio communication planner, that is a security of communication study, both in the marketing, health, audit, creating greater information. Those can be achieved as you provide a year, whole operation number, that could be worked. And then lastly, with last number of the issues, was the purchase of extra classroom activity group work, meeting form of cities and assets, over these two different ones. Those include the test speed, the permanent made reconciliation, the annual weekly, any of the streaming, the government. Moving on to the next slide, we're getting our raise for applying any requests. This slide presents the general plan, revenue, which is in the end, that is the plan, first is the assignment of the statistics, top of the other revenue. Total revenues, but you really didn't have anything about services, it's only four million dollars, pretty even with the prior year. And you can see that you've got a lot, any of the explanation of this entrance without exceeded the running, which initially was out coming in. Eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve. That they increased from the former leader, a some of those events without directly related to the transfer and use of reserves. That was approved in the current year, some capitalizing to bank account, they're in the year, those were the transfer of giving the fund, facing capital projects to be to use in the capital. So while there's always a decrease in our balance, the demo funds here, about eleven million dollars, that is all designed and using the support of demo. The next slide presents the general plan, financial analysis, moving to the accurate position, the last slide you use, of the no common district. Four and three from H two, committing the previous four year, and the twelve from down this energy of the fine. Which in this slide, it was the district's general file, as all of the general file, and to have twenty-two point nine million dollars. That can be a little bit increasing about a million dollars, from thirty-four point seven million dollars. You can see on this slide, with the chunk, of the graph in your mind, is the good area where the next piece occurred, that you strictly find out, that had good service. So you can see that decreasing for preventing things to to translate into capital objects. The blue section represents unstructured funding, so the fund down, that is like when I gave these results. And that slide presents all the data information, all of this, the top floor or. Next for your information, the top floor or, each year has a small amount of executive down. And that will continue to have a base on the investments from the state, the money is spent, and then there's a way on the state to reverse. But you're having a period of office of fund downs in the top floor, one on one, who have five of the period of feedbacks. This for your information, we had a balcony first, we have a one day. Moving on to the slide five, this paragraph is going to drop the hours to the down, it's a good. The front element did not have a variable reverse height with. The red section, everything is more efficient for the assigned fund downs versus the blue section, we refer to it as. The red section because the year mark is in it, whereas the blue section is completely unassigned, valuable to the district, perfectly designated. The red section is finding your own section, includes the portion of the budget that is appropriated for the next fiscal year, is about two point two million dollars. There's a portion of the capital segments, that's not giving the loser, that's what it's about five hundred thousand dollars. And then there's some bubbles during the awards, on the day of conference, that and that is the conditions. And then taking that into consideration, this configuration, the last slide, I think, this is the front end on the public district, that is subject to such a thirteen, eighteen or whatever. Which relates to the district to have four persons who are overdue for them, which turns on the rest of the. You can see here, the district is four, that four percent, four will be split with them, there they mentioned, they have triggers, I am on evidence, make a condition. The district has well, well, four, well, yeah, it goes to four percent, intentions from the data, around about five billion dollars. To fund for future cover, so we can bring these people, the ill first. The line are over, and as you can see, the decision thing is second, we're also dealing with needing to respond to the D, F, R, plans, but that has its own downs. And it'll be in the bottom there, and the district can come from many, multiple projects, and so that will be down on those materials, we can go to the community place to to move on to the disabled. And then last thing, overall observations, and initially the whole operation, that has been completed, contact with it, the other forms, series, help, over the interest that we are complying. We work about expenditures, usually by the last, we're getting this asked by the government, that is testing, they know issue, in regards to. So overall, our least of the view, appreciate you working for the district, thank you, and then questions at this point, and I think it's been for the rest of our contact information, or for these contact information on there.
Yep, good, thank you. All right, there's no resident comments. I'll call for a motion to approve the consensus agenda items that submitted. No.
Can you separate number two just like?
Yeah, I can, yes. All right, we move in second, and we'll separate number two, anything else to separate or discuss? All right, all those in favor accepting items number one, and then three through eight, please say aye. Aye. Boys abstaining, motion carries, Allison, go ahead.
Okay, I just wanted to go through the reserves with you, just so you understand really how how I'm recommending that they be funded. We had about three point, sorry, couple million dollars, two point five million dollars to reimburse the reserves. That wasn't, just to be clear, two point five million dollars in excess, that was like re reimbursed, so we extend from the reserves, and then we're going to reimburse some of these reserves for their expenditures. Basically, so, workers' comp reserve, we were going to add seventy-nine thousand, sixty dollars and sixty-two cents, bringing it to an ending balance of one million, four hundred seventy-four thousand, six hundred sixty-nine dollars and sixty cents. The ERS retirement reserve, I'm recommending we fund an additional hundred thousand, so that would bring the total of that reserve to one million, six hundred ninety-seven thousand, two hundred eight dollars and seven cents. That wouldn't even cover one year of payments, just so you know, that's far less than what we paid here to the retirement system. The TRS reserve, I'm recommending we fund five hundred twenty-three thousand dollars, or five hundred twenty-two thousand, two hundred two dollars. That would bring that balance to one million, four hundred twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred thirty-two dollars and forty-four cents, and again, that dollar amount does not cover even one year of employer expenditures for our staff. The ABLR benefit, which is the employee's benefit accrued liability reserve, is sits at nine hundred fifty-nine thousand, one hundred ninety-seven dollars, eighty-two cents, and that covers. Things like payouts and retirement folks. Tax surcharge reserve is at two hundred fifty-seven thousand, two hundred thirty-nine dollars and sixty-five cents. And that's for tax or claims that the district would receive to cover those expenditures. We have an unemployment insurance reserve at a hundred and three thousand, fifty-one dollars and forty cents. We have one, two, three, four transportation reserves right now. The four total, one of which was voted on in May, a brand new reserve. To be, the limit was five million dollars, that is still has room to be funded, so I'm recommending we put a million dollars in that reserve. Which would give our total for the four reserves, transportation, at five million, two hundred fifty-seven thousand, eight hundred one dollars and twenty-nine cents. So just to be, for your understanding, and be clear, these electric buses that they're talking about, we have some purchasing two thousand twenty-seven, average cost is about four hundred thousand dollars. That would give us thirteen buses. We right now try to refill our bus, at seven to eight buses a year, that wouldn't even give us two years of buses, with what we have now, so. We still have room in that reserve to fill, again, that was at five million dollars, that was the one that was just order approved. We have one, two, three, three, and three current capital reserves, general capital reserves for improvements, capital improvements. And I'm recommending that that five hundred thousand dollars that's over now, in the unappropriated fund balance, that we set aside as an assignment. To a new capital reserve, to be voted on in May by the by the taxpayers. So that would add five hundred thousand, so, for the four, because the other three are full now, so we can't put anymore in, and we've been drawing down from them. So with that five hundred thousand dollars, that would give us three million, two hundred thirty-one thousand, nine hundred eighty-one dollars and sixty-one cents, sixty-seven cents, I'm sorry. For those four reserves, right now, our building aid is at seventy-nine percent, so to cover the taxpayer share, that would give us about a fifteen million dollar project, fifteen million. For all of them. We have two capital technology reserves, one, again, was a new one that was voted on in May. The first one is full, so we voted on a new, to open a new one, I'm recommending that we add three hundred ten thousand, eight hundred twenty-six dollars and forty-two cents to that reserve. There's a three million dollar limit on that one. And the two together is about one point seven two six million, somewhere around there, one point seven three six million, to cover costs of instructional and technology supplies. And then we have our appropriated fund balance for current year's budget is at two point one eight nine. And then we would, that would allow us to maintain our four percent balance for the unappropriated fund balance, which is three million, three hundred seventy-eight thousand, eight hundred fifteen dollars, fifteen cents, so that's like our. Cash flow money, you know, so when we're waiting, awaiting payments from the state, we have that to use as kind of a cash flow purposes and. Like we had a discussion about it in during the audit committee meeting, like that amount doesn't even cover the amount of expenditures that we have for the Tuscoree school on an annual basis. So, right now, we're doing well in our reserves, we're using them well for capital improvements and bus purchases, but those are my recommendations for the reserves, and that's what's showing on the agenda.
One question. So we use our, some of our reserves for budget, but how does that fall into where we were last year?
So I appropriate an amount every year to use toward the budget, and that's it, we need to use it, so we did not need to use it last year. So we did not dip in, is that, if that's your asset.
And 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 if could I just add, we thought we were.
Right.
Right?
We initially thought we were.
We ended up with some additional revenues that came in.
Well, it was really expenditures that we found that could have been moved to the grants, so that's what happened.
That's right.
We didn't have additional revenues, what happened was, we found that were some expenditures that were misaligned, they were in the wrong fund, so we moved them to the federal grants, and we were able to save.
So we thought we were going to be a few hundred thousand dollars on the wrong side of it, now, but but understand, each year we've tightened up, we've never been this close.
Right.
Like this one million dollars, and it's interesting, we were having a conversation with within the audit committee meeting, and Rick brought it up, had to do with both buses and. The costs of turning over your transportation grounds that you would need to do for electric busing. Those costs are all going to be very, very significant, and and the idea of, I'm going to tell you, if for the next few years, we only have a million dollars extra every single year to put aside. I don't know how we'll ever get to the point where we can do these electric buses. You know, they keep saying that, they keep saying the prices are going to come down, but right now, they're three times the cost of our other buses.
Well, and the other thing too, is like they expect us to start purchasing them in twenty twenty-seven, which means you have to have your infrastructure in place, there's no way, we just, we wouldn't be able to do it.
Well, you can phase it in, but still, you'd have to have the main order.
Right, and and just the approvals through New York State routine, you know, if we start it now, you know, maybe, but.
Yeah, you didn't actually pass the law yet, or that's worth a discussion.
So, yes, as of right now, the way that it's set is that districts are to purchase, start purchasing in twenty twenty-seven. And by twenty thirty-five, the fleet is expected to be turned over, now what they're saying is, that they they think that that bar is going to get moved, right? But but the problems, like, are, so so let me just say this, just today, I saw the new grant money that came out for electric buses. And it's a huge pot of money this time, okay, it was a lot smaller last night, because they're trying to get people to jump into it, I get it, and to get a few of them to try it, great. Problem is, once you start that transition, the cost that you're incurring as a district versus what everybody else is, it's it's out of this world. And for a district our size, we carry about seventy buses in our fleet. So, you know, go ahead and multiply seventy buses times almost four hundred thousand dollars. Twenty-eight million dollars.
And there's restrictions on who can use that much.
So, so in in the last grant, I don't know that we would be qualified, but the last grant, we didn't apply, we didn't qualify for, because we were, because of where we were, you know, our financial position.
Now, Allison, one question, we have four buses in there. I've read this, so.
Yeah.
Are we allowed, if the board chief down road, go to a fifth reserve?
Yeah.
There's no limit, I won't be ridiculous, just the amount of each reserve.
And you, and the amount can be set, but you have to be careful, because the amount you set has to be, it has to be, like, used within ten years. So it has to be like funded and used, like, there's a certain time limit on, so you got to be careful how much you set each reserve, you know what I mean? Because you can't have it too much, because it'll take you too long to fill it, and you can't have it, you know.
You have to be able to fill it and spend it in the time that you're spending.
Based on what the parent, state, that's not.
Not with, not with buses, if it goes that direction, that's right.
So the difference between the buses we purchased now. And the buses for electric ones, what is that, the only big one?
Yeah, it's about three hundred thousand dollars per bus, so per year, we, right now, we, right now, we purchase seven to eight buses a year, they run about around a hundred thousand, it's a little over a hundred and twenty now. So about seven bus, hundred twenty, the average bus cost is four hundred thousand dollars for one bus.
So we don't, we purchase.
We purchase seven now, because the cost has been a little bit, but so about.
And the reason we purchase seven is because every ten years, we turn over our fleet, with the amount of miles that we put on our buses, and it works pretty well.
Right.
And then then at the end of those ten years, the buses still are okay, we sell them off, and we get money for it.
Biggest issue is the infrastructure you're going to have to build.
That's the other part.
Yeah, I do not know of one superintendent, or I'm sorry, board president I've talked to across the state, that is in favor of this. You know, there's a lot of questions that, and I saw what, from the board officers day at NISBA, is that why did we skip hybrids? They want to know that aspect, because that's, you know, the the cost wasn't that much more to go to a hybrid, and there is higher fuel savings, you still to be had there. And there's no change in your infrastructure at your physical plant, you can do everything still the same that way, so, I know that is going to be talked about at the at the NISBA conference in a couple weeks. And I'm going to be part of that conversation for that too, but.
So the other thing that our district, because we have our own mechanics and our own garage, it's not just the cost of the infrastructure in the parking lot, having, we have to redo the whole bus garage. Because they're going to have to have all new equipment.
It's going to be a different lift because of the way to the buses too.
Right.
Yep.
Right. Either that or we have source repairs, I mean, what do you do, you know, they're forcing you to do stuff that you don't want to do.
All right, all those in favor then accepting that resolution, please say aye. Aye, boys abstaining, she carries, call for motion to accept the personnel report as submitted.
Move.
Second.
Anything to discuss there? If not, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, boys abstaining, motion carries. All right, capital project committee.
Really no, no change yet, right, I don't know, Daniel.
No, ju- just Bob and I talked today. About October seventeenth, we're expected to get an estimate back from Turner, the updated estimate on the auditorium, and a couple other things. When that, when that comes, we'll then, we'll we'll do a, the the small group of us, Allison, myself, Greg, we'll do a little page turn with them the following week. And then the week after that, we're probably talking about setting a meeting to bring the capital project committee back together to look at kind of the 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 cost with the the new estimates. And also, the the design, you know, with the design where we're at.
And the other thing, we're still finishing up colonial village, right?
Correct, we're still working on colonial village, we're doing.
Yeah.
That's right.
All right, anything more from the audit committee, I know with, I know we had the report, so.
You heard the young lady talk about the audit committee, that, yeah, had audit, with drugs, or went real well, and there was one other audit meeting just before her, and the district. Made the decision around twenty-one, twenty-two, just to get cost of different areas of the student population, and just to make sure the tax that we would get, you know, was, were shipping, and then that went well. So we're doing good there, so.
All right. All right, policy committee, we have the first reading of the following policies, policy thirty-four ten, the code of conduct, policy thirty-four twenty, non-discrimination and anti-harassment of the district. Policy fifty-one forty, the administration of the budget, policy fifty-three thirty, budget transfers, policy fifty-six thirty, facilities, inspection, operation, and maintenance. Policy sixty-one twenty, sexual harassment in the workplace, policy seventy-four twenty, sports and the athletic program, and policy eighty-two forty, instructions in certain subjects. It's coming from a standing committee, so it's already been moved and seconded, anything to discuss on those, any questions? All right, if not, all those in favor accepting the first reading, please say aye. Aye, boys abstaining, motion carries. You have the year-end budget transfers as an informational item there, make sure you check that over, our ex-official student members report.
So recently, we've had a lot of post-high school discussion going on with both the senior and the junior class, and some some things where we had a college fair, like a mini one, the ALC on the second. That was open to anybody during each period, there was ad test testing on October third, and the counselors have been meeting with. Everybody in the senior class to discuss their post-high school plans, and I think that's also kind of in preparation for the free week with the student admissions, so that's coming up as well. And the homecoming dance was also a success, it went very well. And it's already five weeks into the school year, coming this Friday, which is, yeah. Everything's going smoothly.
All right, last superintendent's report.
Start with Tom with hiring, because I know they just did another job fair, yeah?
We did, we participated in a few different job fairs over the the last few months, and, you know, again, it's my opportunity to put in a plug for bus drivers, plus attendants, and certainly what we're concentrating on now. You head out to some local restaurants, or or gathering places such as Tim Hortons, such such that you see our new placard that we put up with a QR code, and hopefully that attracts some some eyeballs to it, and and obviously further candidacy for some of those positions that we still need, but. We're in extraordinarily great shape with our academic professional positions, and we're doing much better, I would say, this year at filling some of our substitute capacities as well, on the school support side of the house, so that's a positive, I'd say. You know, and we'll we'll continue to work on on the drivers and the bus attendants.
Great. I think everybody that's here would have received a video that came out this afternoon about four-thirty from me, just commending everybody really on the great start to the school year. I was going to have Mr. Kuleski put it up and walk, kind of walk through the PowerPoint, I don't know if there's really, if you go all the way over the slideshow over the top right there. We 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 can walk through it, but 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 really, you know, at each one of the buildings, we we've had a, we've had a really great start, oh, you got it? Yeah, it's perfect, so I'll come around, Western Elementary, pretty simple, there must just be kind, right, we've got this behind. I thought this was a great picture, the parachute are still around, they were around whenever I was in PE class, they're still there, still exciting for kids, and in the the far left-hand corner there is Roxy, service dog of West Street, and. These students absolutely love being ridden by Roxy. One thing that is really neat that I saw. Happened on one of the opening days this year, we had a kindergarten student who was struggling coming off the bus, and the bus attendant just couldn't hit the student to move off the bus, and I, I just happened to be there, I walked over and tried to help this student, just didn't, didn't want to go, he was on his day two. And I saw Roxy down the sidewalk, and called for the teacher who was with Roxy, and the teacher walked over and said, would you like to lock the dog in today? The kid stopped, immediately stops crying, grabs a leash, walks Roxy all the way to class, and was, 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 was unbelievable, not one of us adults was over that kid, really, at least not. Secondary background, I wasn't getting that kid going, it was, it was really an amazing thing just to watch, so that was West Street. Here is the Tuscoree Nation School, Tuscoree really meant the way with orange shirt thing, the idea that every child, child matters. We saw orange throughout our district, in our district office, you'll see some of that through some of these other slides. Um, we saw orange throughout our district, in our district office, you'll see some of that through some of these other slides. But again, a great start here, you can see music, uh, reading, uh, the arts all at play on this slide next. Eric Road Elementary School, uh, orange shirt day again, you see that, see all people participating in that, um. They also have their, uh, wel- welcome back presentation for, for their assembly for all their kids. And you can see the falcon waving to the kids up there on stage, next. Colonial Village, they had a leadership fun run, obviously the weather's been great, so taking advantage of the weather for a fun run. Perfect maybe warm at times as we know. Again, orange shirt day present there. What I really think is awesome is that. Um, our students staff, uh, so many people have bought into this and I think rightfully so. Uh, uh, to show support for, uh, indigenous people, but particularly the Tusker Nation would have been part of our district. So, uh, to me, that's really neat, really exciting. Edward Town Middle School, um, down at the bottom, you can see there was a assembly there, uh, where everyone belongs. They've had a web program there for maybe, uh, say eight, seven, eight years now, um, really important program. That program is intended to help students who are coming into sixth grade make the transition to middle school. And it's a very, um, strategically set up plan for the year. So it's not just a one-time, let's. Mentor these kids the first day when they come in. There's things each month of the school year to help those sixth graders feel more and more a part of the middle school. That's a really important program. The eighth graders help the sixth graders in that program, so really important. Uh, next, Niagara High School, um. Last report I heard, over six hundred something students at the dance, right there? Okay, over six hundred at the dance, packed house, the all-coming game, really, our kids were awesome. Our high school kids in the stands, I mean, other than halftime when they were hungry, I mean, the, the, the stands were packed, they were excellent. Uh, it was, it was a really, really nice all-coming week. And then in the top corner, it says, uh, take a look at teaching conference. Uh, that's an opportunity for our students who may be interested in their career in education. To work with current educators, to give them a glimpse of what it might be like to be in a classroom. We know there was a teacher shortage, uh, I give a lot of credit to our N B T A who really worked to help set this up initially. There was some actually, uh, grant funding that they received to help us set this up. Uh, we need to continue to feed that pipeline and this is, this is what we do. You see the all-coming game, you can see the, the, the fans, the, the crowd, the size, it was awesome, the weather was perfect. It's hard to believe, we had our ninth bi-annual eco-campus revitalization project. We, uh, put millings down on one part of the path that still needed it. Uh, we for- we refortified trees that have been planted in the past. So, uh, tho- those are nice and strong, so many of the trees that were planted are making it. Uh, Mr. Kramer really is the, the brains behind the operation, uh, he's done a fantastic job. I, I ask our whole school community to have their ears open for the spring when we do this next to them. Because if we get the funding for Buffalo Niagara Water, a grant that we went in with them. There is going to be significant work for us to do, and I'm not talking about planting little saplings. We're talking about eight, ten, maybe twelve-foot trees that we're gonna purchase to scrape, to put all the way around our campus. Um, and some other things that are, that could be awesome, a really neat thing for our, for our district, so I'll be looking forward to that. Our school resource officer, our school security officers become more and more part of the fabric of our department's whole time. The elementary school security officers. From Vista have done a fantastic job in those buildings, the community loves them, um. We, we can't say no. What's really neat is that every single school security officer that we had last year came back. That tells you how they're feeling about the place, but I think it also tells you how the place is feeling about them, that I want to be back, uh, so that's really awesome. Uh, our, our SROs, I, I put this on there, um. Our first responders are unbelievable. I, I won't go into a lot of detail, but most of you heard the Black Book of Aggressions that unfortunately I hadn't put out. Uh, all coming up, it's a threat. If it wasn't for law enforcement, um, in this case it was the Houston Police Department. But if, if they weren't able to get on top of that and deem it to not be a credible threat. We were really in jeopardy of not having fans at that. Uh, we were minutes away from that. But because of their fast, but, but complete work and doing it right. We were able to go on, uh, like we wanted to, so, um. Couple of our actually behind me right now, uh, from the police department, uh, representation department, I mean, they, they've been awesome. And I say it all the time, that, that money, they made that money happen, it wasn't. Without that department, so, so great job to your department, um. We have such participation from our, all the law enforcement agencies. In our area and our fire with our district safety committee, they give up time, meetings a year, um, with that many other phone calls. So I, I always want to thank them. Weapons detection. If, if you're noticing your kids getting in quicker at high school, middle school, good. Because they are, if they get on the buses and you don't know, I'm telling you that they're getting faster. Uh, our staff members have done a fantastic job moving that process along. But to make it even faster, we ordered some additional weapons detectors. And when those come, we'll really be able to get some fast, um, so we're excited about that. Our family support center. I think it's, the easiest way to say it is it's a one-stop shop if you need any support. Call there. You can certainly talk to your school counselors, you can talk to your administrators or buildings. But if, if there's, if there's a need, that a family has a need and they wanna, they, they wanna call someone, um, in a very discreet way. Karen Kurt is the developer of that program, she's done a fantastic job. She, she was here, she would tell you she's had a lot of help, um, but the program has grown exponentially. They, for, for families dealing with moving security, for families that are dealing with, um, you know, clothing issues, uh. If, if they need council supports. We can either help all those things, or we can point you to resources for all of us. Um, October tenth is actually World Mental Health Day. Our district has come a long way in the last few years with the types of supports that we're able to offer families. Uh, from extra counselors, extra social workers, and of course the family support center, which allows us to work with outside agencies. To get some supports when it comes to counseling. So if you need help, if you need support, don't look any further than us, because if we don't have enough, we'll point you in the right direction. And make sure that the web address on there, that's our website, you can go and see everything that the family support center has got. Uh, this is really exciting. This is the first time, um, in a decade that our numbers, the number of students who are actually attending our six schools. Have gone up from June to September. Um, it's about an increase of about thirty-five kids. It doesn't seem like a lot, I, I'll tell you this. We expected it to go down by thirty-five. So if, if the trend continues, so it's really, it might add seventy students weight. Which is, which is really great. We hope that continues, um, we'll of course keep everybody up to date on that. Uh, this is the first time that this happens, pretty exciting. So ju- just a few other things I have under superintendent comments, you know, excuse me, tell me I used up my time, um. The. Last week, Friday?
Yes.
Last week Friday, we had a wellness day, uh, staff wellness day. And it's like, it's our fifth, um, staff development day tha- that we've added, and, um, I would say it was a huge success. Mr. Stack played an integral part in, in, in organizing that. He had a committee, I'm gonna let him mention those committee members, they really did a great job. It gave our staff members an opportunity to, um, do some things, um, for their mental health and wellness.
Yeah, it was really, uh, Dan said earlier, we've been blessed with this great weather and it, uh, ended up just being a tremendous day for our staff. Um, and, you know, it couldn't have been possible without the planning committee, so. Uh, Dominic really, uh, you know, worked with Bosse's and their culinary arts students to support a really healthy. Uh, meal, it was delicious for, for our entire staff.
And what a neat opportunity for ours, for some of ours, one of our students actually, but then the Bosse's students from Career Tech had to come over here. To prov- to provide food for all of us.
Some were our students, others were from other districts, uh, but it was a great opportunity for us to showcase some local produce to apples and. And they're in season, so that was really a delightful piece. But Dominic did a great job, uh, Matt McCanna and the entire physical education staff just huge with the different stations. Uh, in support that they provided for our staff, and it was really, uh, again, a beautiful day outside, so nothing was shut down, canceled or, or moved. Uh, due to, uh, his work and the D staff work there. Uh, Dan had mentioned, uh, Karen Kurt, Caitlin Jones, our two social workers. Uh, were on the panel and they were, they were just tremendous assets in making this thing. Uh, go with so many outside, uh, vendors, especially on the mental health side, coming into our, uh, district to support, uh, some of the stations. That we have to meet staff members there. Cynthia Travers, we couldn't have done it without. Cynthia Travers has just done a magnificent job as our community head director. Um, she's done some really slick things, her webpage is updated and refreshed in the last few years. And she has really broadened how many people we're using in the community to come into our schools. So she, we were able to take a lot of those people and bring them into the fold as well. So it's just a, a little bit more to add to the arsenal for that.
And she was able to use her, her program, sorry to interrupt, the Course Storm to, to, to. Get all of our people who wanted to sign up for the particular classes, they did it through Course Storm, and she really did that work, which was awesome.
It's a really neat registration tool, you know, it's almost kind of like registering for college courses, you know, and it's, it's done online and. It's set your, uh, seat capacity threshold and so on and so forth, so when you were blocked out of a course, it, it gave you a cue to move on to the next one that was open. Um, so again, really great job by Cynthia, uh, Travers, we, we couldn't have done it without her. But there's just so many other SRPs, uh, uh, teachers, um, and other members that are, you know, in our, in our community that came in. And, you know, worked to present these awesome, uh, uh, whether it was a clinic. Or whether it was a workshop, or whether it was a physical station, there's so many different avenues for people to participate in. The food, right, I mean, cooking, healthy cooking, you know, um, Anita Muzzi, right, came in from, from Bosse's and. Uh, with some of the, the, the cooking options and, uh, just a tremendous day, so we're really happy with the way it went. We did get some feedback on it from our staff that was really all positive. There, you know, and, and, and it was just, uh, uh, seemed to be something that was really enjoyed by everybody, so thank you.
And the la- last thing I have is this, um, you. Meeting the board have heard me on almost every night I've stopped this year. Talk, right at the end, the last thing I've talked about has been food, right? And, um, the ability for our students to get breakfast and lunch. The, if you didn't see it, um, the United States Department of Agriculture, they lowered the community eligibility provision. From forty percent to twenty-five percent. Um, and that's effective October twenty-sixth of this year, twenty-twenty-three, um. When, we don't, we have the two schools right now, the high school and Eric Road, who do, who do not qua- who didn't qualify. So when you combine those two schools and put a percentage to that, which is how they do it. It's about twenty-eight percent. So we're over the twenty-five percent threshold. So assuming all of that holds, we, we, we gotta get the filing report back, cause our auditors looked at it. But both, if that holds, both the high school and Eric Road, all of the students there would get breakfast and lunch, everything. Okay, so we'll, we'll, we gotta make sure we get that, and that would be as soon as November first. That would start. Okay, that's all I have.
Okay. Any questions, superintendent's report? All right, finance, uh, we have two things to discuss, the property tax exemption. And the tax collection over under limits, Allison, is that, uh?
Yep, so, okay, so the board has been discussing a couple of property tax exemptions, so. One was the, um, volunteer firefighter and ambulance worker. And the other was the senior exemption, um, increase in, um, income. Um, I'm putting, right now, putting together the resolutions for the board for the next meeting. Um, Dan, was there anything you wanted to add to it?
No, I mean, just one thing, and that's this, so, so, so at the next meeting, there'll both be resolutions, we're gonna have public hearings for both. So that, wh- when we get those on the agenda, the public, if anybody has any questions, they wanna talk about it. I know Mr. Sabro has been in contact with, uh, in the past, uh, one of the individuals from one of the fire departments. If he has any information, or if he would like to come and talk at that meeting, he certainly could do that, the public hearing will be a great time for that. Um, but both of those items will be. Both the public hearing and there'll be items that the board can act on on them.
The other, um, was there any other questions on that? The other thing I wanted to talk about quickly was tax collection, so we have a new tax collector this year. And the question came up, um, there are people that overpay and underpay on the tax bill. For whatever reason, they write the check out long, whatever. So I just wanted to discuss with the board how they felt about setting like a one-dollar limit. So when people write their check for, if it's short for a dollar or less, or if it's, um, over a dollar or less. That we don't, for example, right now, we would have to send it to collection. If it's, if it's, uh, you know, short paid a dollar, cause they didn't pay their tax bill, and they get, you know, it with fines and all that stuff. So if it's like within a dollar, I'm just asking the board if they're comfortable with that. If we take like the overages from the overages and apply them to the unders, so that it kind of evens out, um. You know, other districts I've called, a lot of the smaller districts like Wilson, they know, the textbook knows a lot of people. We have a bigger district, um, it's very difficult to even contact people because there's no phone books anymore. So you can't get ahold of people, you don't know where they live, um, sometimes their mortgage is held in escrow, so you can't, you know. Reach the escrow companies, um, we're running into some of this now, and, you know, I'm just thinking it. The majority of them are smaller amounts, you know, uh, a dollar, two dollars, whatever, um. You know, one of the districts set limits like that, um, tell me, you know. I guess I'm looking for your input, what you would be comfortable with, uh, as far as the tax collector. You know, if there, if someone wrote a check for, and they misrepresented, you know, or, or write it wrong or whatever, voted for. A dollar less or a dollar fifty less. Would you be comfortable setting like a dollar or two-dollar limit for people that are over and under, and we just?
So my question becomes then is that, all right, so now everyone realizes, hey, if I go one less dollar with my school taxes in the district. Otherwise, is that eighteen thousand dollars less that we have coming in then right now?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's what would happen. And that's why some districts don't do it, they have a zero tolerance, like Lockport has a zero tolerance. There's, well, we try to go back to the people and say, either, you know, write us another check and get it here before the deadline, you know, so that.
Yes, what I'm saying is, let's say they did have their check in by the deadline. And it was that.
Well, that's what we try to do, the problem is, we can't get ahold of these people, cause we have no way of knowing how to get ahold of them. You know what I mean? Like, some people, there's no, unless you can Google them and find a phone number or something. There's really no way to get ahold of them, cause there's nowhere to put a phone number on the tax bill, you know, or anything like that.
So, so my thing is, I'd like to know how much, how many times that happens before I make a decision on anything like that.
Stack like this, I can tell you right now, there's a stack of checks like this sitting there waiting for me, you know. Me to come back with an answer, what are we doing with this?
I mean, over, under, like, what's, what's, what do you think, is it?
I would say, uh, you know. Here's the, let me explain what happened in the past, just so you're aware, this has happened in the past, and our tax collector actually paid the money out of our own pocket.
If it was under a dollar.
He paid the difference. I, I don't think that's fair, I don't think the tax collector should be doing that. But on the other hand, I see what you're saying, you know what I mean, like, if everybody knows that, are they all gonna write?
So, so Allison, can we have somebody just throw, like, if there's thirty of them, like, you know, that was thirty, like, that's, that, from here. But, but, but can we throw those like into a quick spreadsheet and just, and we'll bring it back to the next meeting? Share so you can see the range for what it was like this year, and then you can.
And what I would, that's something that I would not want to create a standing policy for, but something that we have to renew yearly.
Yep.
Based on.
Sure, all the southern people.
It's been a zero tolerance here. It's always been a zero tolerance.
Yeah.
But the issue is, like I said, the tax. But the issue is, like I said, the tax collector would pay the.
As I, again, i- if it's, I just want to see the numbers now and then we do something that we have to, maybe at a reorg meeting. It's one of the things that we have to to vote on again every year to allow happen.
Yep.
Because if it does get extirpian where it is, like every single person says, hey, I'm just gonna not pay by a dollar and it's a dollar less I have to pay. Now we're footing an eighteen thousand dollar bill.
Yeah.
And if you're gonna look at it, you may wanna start to monitor it and see if it's repetitive.
Yeah.
So I think, yes, like, I think what you do is annually, you look at it and see if all of a sudden it's increasing. Yeah. Same people too. Sure. Yeah. Good point.
Do you know how much last year or two, dollar wise, what?
No, I don't. I don't know.
I'm just curious if it's, if it's more the hours we're paying.
Well, that, and that's kind of Allison, like, one of the main points, right, Jason? Yeah, good point. I mean, that's the other reason, right? So how many minutes, how much time do you give up chasing it? Do you, do you, you know, you're, somebody's on the phone with collections and it's for thirty six cents? But, you know, the 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 person power, you know, you waste more time, a hundred percent, sure.
I mean, other districts do, you know, if it's short, it goes right back to the council for collection, like, most districts would try to get a hold of the taxpayer any way possible and say, no, your check was short a dollar fifty. Please write us another check and bring it in by this date. If we don't get it from you, then we're sending it to collection.
Exactly. Like, I have no problem with it, except that's something I'd want to have approval annually on as opposed to just being a standing policy.
And one other question about, you know, about doing this online or something.
I'm looking at doing it next month. Yep. Next year is online. Next year, we're looking to do it. Nobody was available, we couldn't do it online without a big fee for people. So I'm trying to find a way to do it through one of our banks actually is now doing it. So I'm trying to see if we could do something online with them without such a big fee.
I know, the county, I mean, or county, like town or league, that's three bucks to pay it online.
Yeah. I know there's always a fee, like, when you do it online. And, you know, obviously, there's credit card fees and people put it on their credit cards to charge people that for that fee, which I did. But I'm in discussions right now with our bank, Jacob Monarch, to try to get something done online. Yep.
Items for board discussion. Uh, just one thing. A member of the community had raised a concern about students that are removed from events and for disciplinary reasons. And so, and we're talking at the high school level. So I'd asked the superintendent to just see what the procedure was in all of our outlying districts in in the Orleans Niagara Bosse's for what happens for students that like that in that situation. If they're, you know, the district's responsible for calling home for the students, or if it's the students are on their own recognizance being at the high school level. What was your answer that you got from the district?
Thank you. I was able to check in with every superintendent in Orleans Niagara Bosse's and all the answers were the same. If a high school student was asked to leave and there was gonna be no additional discipline, then that student, then they wouldn't call. They wouldn't make phone call. If there was gonna be additional discipline. Or if it was, you know, severe, districts commented that then they would, which we would too, make that call to them.
But for simple like student misbehaving, you're asked, you're told to leave because of that, where it's not gonna be a future future discipline, like suspension or anything else like that, be like, you're out of here, you know, you're under, you know, your own basically core.
Correct.
Any questions on that item to the board? Right. Um, any old business? Any new business? Public comments? All right, any board member comments?
Yeah, I'd like to, first of all, I'd like to thank all the SROs and the policemen in the back for everything you do for our district, staff and students. Very commendable and we all thank you. To Dan and all the staff, it has to be a lot of time to set this up. And I have to tell you, it's so much, it's more enjoyable, it's more comfortable when you're not in the ALC to have it set up like this. So I thank you.
Yeah, I actually like having it in here.
Yeah.
Yeah. Fortunately, we wouldn't be able to have it past April.
And it could be a little cooler.
It could be a little cooler. I'm with you.
But thank you.
Yeah, come April, we gotta figure out another place if we have to move it here.
Exactly.
Yeah, they just won't be here.
So the backup, right?
Yeah.
Middle spoils.
Another courtyard. All right, any other board member comments? All right, I'll call for a motion to adjourn then. Moving second, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Hold your standing. Motion carries. We're adjourned.